It's six o'clock and I welcome everyone to the McMinnville City Council Work Session this evening. It is January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I call this meeting to order. We have two presentations this evening. The first is one of our partners within the county and that's the Yamhill Community Action Partnership, or probably more appropriately known as YCAP. And tonight we have the Executive Director Alexandra Hindon and the Youth Outreach Director Amber Hanson-Moore to introduce their topic. And they've got topics, but they also, it's an opportunity for us to see the good work that they're involved in. Alexandra and I have an opportunity to meet monthly and we share what's going on between their organization and the city. We also have Kelly Menke, who sits on their board and is the treasurer. And so with that Alexandra and Amber, we welcome you and turn this part of the meeting over to you.
Perfect. Thank you Mayor Hill and Council President Dropkin and council members. As Executive Director of YCAP, I'm really grateful for the opportunity to share tonight an overview of our current work in the community and our role as a community action agency. I just want to confirm, can everyone see my screen all right?
We can Alexandra.
Perfect. So this evening I wanted to start it off with not the mission statement of our agency, but a greater promise, the promise of community action. Community action changes people's lives, embodies the spirit of hope, improves communities, and makes America a better place to live. We care about the entire community. We are dedicated to helping people help themselves and each other. And I share that because YCAP is more than just Yamhill County. We are part of a greater community action movement and community action network. So I want to share just briefly what that looks like. Community Action Partnership is a national 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that provides assistance to over eleven hundred community action agencies nationwide. This network was born out of the Johnson administration in the nineteen-sixties at the height of anti-poverty work. And when this national network was formed, it opened the doors to direct federal funding set aside for local planning and local community work to mobilize in addressing issues of poverty nationwide. One bucket of funding you may have heard of is the Community Services Block Grant, or CSBG funding. And that is an example of funding that is set aside specifically for community action agencies. No one is eligible for those allocations and that can be reinvested in the community in programming and planning. The next tier of our involvement is the State Association, which is called the Community Action Partnership of Oregon, otherwise called CAPO. And in Oregon, we have eighteen community action agencies that serve every corner of the state. Yet each one is uniquely empowered to create local programming and responses to the needs arising from issues of poverty. So within this group, there's a high level of collaboration. YCAP is an active member. We meet monthly to address needs that span both rural and metro areas of Oregon. Funding needs we're experiencing. We share data as we're able to. And we also are able to share resources, which elevates our ability to serve all Oregonians. An example of that is during the height of COVID, we had rental, emergency rental assistance that was distributed and we found a high need in Yamhill County versus another partner agency didn't have as high of a need. So they were able to transfer several hundreds of thousands of dollars in addition to what we had already been allocated that we could directly distribute to Yamhill County residents when there wasn't as great of need elsewhere. Likewise, when we had in excess of some specific shelter dollars and we knew that there was a greater need for wildfire victims in other areas of Oregon to remain sheltered after losing their homes, we were able to transfer funds to a partner agency. So that kind of flexibility is born out of the collaboration within CAPO. CAPO is also the only established geographically equitable delivery system in Oregon for anti-poverty work. So we learned very quickly that during COVID, this allowed us to respond very rapidly together to distribute emergency dollars for food, wildfire and ice storm relief, several forms of rental assistance and more. So in the last two years, I would say the Community Action Partnership of Oregon has been strengthened and we feel very prepared that in future, should we be needed to this role, we could receive allocations and respond statewide. Here's a quick picture of what the coverage across Oregon looks like by the Community Action Partnership of Oregon and the specific community action agencies. Most of the community action agencies are 501(c)(3) nonprofits. There are a couple that are specifically county-integrated. Several of the community action agencies serve a multi-county region. You can see that by the color down the map. YCAP is one of the few that only serves a single county. And again, each region builds programming based on the local needs they are seeing, the access to resources there, and what partnerships can be established in that region. So while we maintain a similar commitment to anti-poverty work, we are afforded the ability to find local solutions and be involved in local planning because we know one size doesn't fit all. A couple of our closest neighbors that I will just call out that we're able to work with is Washington County Community Action, which serves Washington County. We also work with Community Action Team that serves Columbia, Clatton and Tillamook. We're very close to Mid Willamette Community Action, which serves Marion and Polk Counties and Community Services Consortium, which is Lynn Benton and Lincoln County. And that brings us to YCAP. So YCAP opened in nineteen eighty. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We opened when the population here surpassed fifty thousand. For over forty years, we've been able to build out programs that cover four key service areas. Housing stabilization, energy services, the regional food bank, and youth services. Overall, our key program areas are not emergency-based. They have very different timelines based on the funding source and eligibility criteria within those programs. We see families in Yamhill County often accessing multiple services due to YCAP being able to braid both services and referrals internally, which can help address a variety of challenges to assistance stabilizing a household in a holistic way. Something else that supports this type of work is the diverse funding streams we receive. YCAP receives federal, state grant and private funding. At any given time, we can have seventy to ninety different funding sources. And we find where one has gaps, others might have flexibility. So when an individual or a family is calling into us and we realize we might not be able to meet a need with one program, we can reach out to another and really braid dollars so that we can serve them comprehensively. I would say in the last three years, a lot of change has taken place at YCAP. We went from a six million dollar agency before COVID to a fifteen-plus million dollar agency today. We are currently in a strategic planning process and hope to have a new strategic plan in place by the end of two thousand and twenty-two. This will include planning for a community needs, community-wide needs assessment, which is also required through that CSBG funding I referenced earlier, but will allow us to review our current scope of services and areas of potential need that may have changed. So now kind of knowing our broader network, all the way down to how we operate here in Yamhill County, I do want to share with the council a few areas we have seen increased need and growth related to the shifts during COVID and with new funding opportunities. So that will start with an overview of our housing stabilization department. So YCAP's housing programs will bring in more than eight point nine million into Yamhill County during this fiscal year. Seven million will be in direct housing assistance, which is almost six times the amount we distributed in the previous year. We have fully expended our COVID rental relief through three different programs in partnership with Oregon Housing and Community Services. There is another round of rental relief that will be coming and accessible to Yamhill County residents. However, Oregon Housing Community Services is contracting with a third-party vendor out of Seattle to do those applications. So YCAP will be advocating for access and educating the community on how to get that assistance in future. We continue to operate our coordinated entry system and do our work for Built for Zero, looking at a by-name list for the chronically homeless and working towards a functional zero for the chronically homeless in Yamhill County. We have several expanded shelter partnerships happening right now in the county to increase access to resources and staffing to support more shelter beds. And we continue to bring in funding through Oregon Housing and Community Services and HUD programs for individuals who are medically fragile, for veterans, sufferers of domestic violence, and more. Historically, our agency has focused on housing stabilization and homelessness prevention. But I can say during the height of the homelessness crisis and as COVID hit us, YCAP found that we had opportunities and some funding to address gaps in direct services for the homeless in our area. So in the last couple of years, we have focused on increasing street outreach across the county, increasing shelter beds, working with veterans experiencing homelessness through our SSBF program, growing a shelter collaborative across the county, and growing our coordinated entry system. And as of now, this scope of work will continue for our agency, funding permitted. YCAP also has two very unique opportunities now in front of us to expand housing stabilization programming. Again, born out of funding opportunities during the pandemic, and that's Project Turnkey and a Navigation Center. So as we share briefly today about them, I wanted to give you some key reasons that YCAP is committed to piloting both programs in Yamhill County. These both bring distinctly different and unique change within the current system of access to services for those who are unhoused county-wide. YCAP has the ability to provide a foundation of shelter service experience and fiscal stability to pilot both of these, which is required by the legislature and grants related to these projects. There is a great opportunity for building out community collaborations across service providers. And YCAP recognizes that there are some areas of service that will need to be addressed through other providers or other funding. We certainly can't meet every single need, but we want to be part of the critical conversations for the future on complex needs surrounding individuals that might be justice-involved, that might be struggling with behavioral health issues or issues of chemical dependency. YCAP also acknowledges that these programs are not the ultimate solve for serving everyone experiencing homelessness in Yamhill County. But what we are is confident that these are steps in the right direction for our community because they create new pathways for more individuals, often the ones that have more complex challenges and stories than we can see, to seek a helping hand and find a safe place to experience change for their lives. So with that, I will share a little bit about the Turnkey Program of Yamhill. The purpose of Turnkey was to be an extension of a successful motel shelter project during COVID and to establish a non-congregate shelter program. In March two thousand and twenty, we started emergency motelling using our vulnerability screening that we would traditionally use for shelter, but added a COVID health screening to provide safe shelter for unhoused with the greatest risk factors related to COVID. Every household in that program had chronic medical conditions. Many were elderly, disabled, and every single one was literally homeless. During the time of operating as an emergency response, two hundred and twenty adults and forty children were able to move into stable or permanent housing, which was seventy-five percent of the participants during our emergency response. When the opportunity to apply for Turnkey came up, it was unexpected, but we realized very quickly it was potentially the only opportunity to seek funding and have an avenue to keep this type of resource in our community. And we had seen it be successful in a rapid response situation and wondered what it would look like if we were able to stabilize it over a few years. So the application process was very fast-moving. YCAP applied in concert with Providence Supportive Housing for the Turnkey Grant through Oregon Community Foundation, and that application was successful. YCAP also secured additional funding from Oregon Housing Community Services to grant Providence Supportive Housing additional funds to complete the purchase of the motel as well as backfill facility operations. So the program officially started on September first, two thousand and twenty-one, and it's estimated that we'll be able, YCAP will be able to operate the program through this site for about three years. As of January one, two thousand and twenty-two, we removed the COVID risk screening for Turnkey, which is opening up the opportunity for a greater number of households to be enrolled that are not just experiencing medical risks for COVID. So we're excited to really shift the program in that way. So the current status is Providence Supportive Housing owns the property. The Housing Authority of Yamhill County is also a key partner. They're acting as the local property manager. And YCAP is overseeing the program with case managers on-site, working with eighty-three program participants and forty rooms right now. The site does have fifty-five rooms and we're in the process of seeking additional funds to increase our staffing and resources so that at some point in the next three years, we'll be able to operationalize all fifty-five rooms. An additional positive to this collaborative project is that Providence plans to develop a permanent supportive housing build in the next three to five years, which also allows them to stay in compliance with the Oregon Community Foundation grant that this will remain an affordable housing location for fifty years in our community. So YCAP is happy to support that in the beginning and then as it transitions with plans for permanent supportive housing with Providence. As many of you may already know, there are nineteen Turnkey projects in Oregon and every single one looks a little bit differently. They all went through this rapid application process. They are all establishing their programs to meet local needs. And so I am certain that more updates will come as we see this work unfold in our community and across the state. The second pilot project is a navigation center, which we are working closely with the city of McMinnville on. And at this point in time, we intend to call it Any Door Place. Some of you may recognize that name because Any Door is the name of our coordinated entry system. And the purpose of this is to combine two neighboring YCAP shelters into one facility that will continue to include overnight shelter, but it will add a day center and a space for onsite case managers and service partners. A physical location with this navigation center enhances and expands our existing efforts in our street outreach team, our coordinated entry process, access to supplies to meet basic needs, and integration of additional service providers. And a significant and important change is that it will also be a physical location that will maintain more accessible hours for community members to refer to, individuals to seek assistance at, and at all times, we will have trained professional staff and providers on-site. The timeline for this program to be operational is June thirty, two thousand and twenty-two. It's another fast deadline, not quite as fast as Turnkey, but it's still fast. So we anticipate that the three components we want to maintain on-site may be phased in, but they will begin on June thirty, two thousand and twenty-two. There are, we are reviewing contracts right now with the city and reviewing the construction needs for the property. We have secured construction costs in the first year of operations. We are currently seeking three years of ops funding through other grants and ARPA funds right now. Much like the Turnkey scenario, there are four navigation centers opening in Oregon. There are unique components to each one and they are all in the early stages of development like we are. So like Turnkey, I believe there will be more information as we learn together and we move forward in this process. I know that housing can sometimes take a front seat these days in discussions, but I do want to assure you that our food bank and our energy and weatherization programs have continued to thrive. They are bringing in high levels of assistance to Yamhill County as well. Our food bank was able to bring in a new refrigerated truck and get a new forklift for our warehouse. We have been distributing record amounts of food, so this is very helpful so we can mobilize food out to our forty-two pantry and partner sites really quickly. We have increased providing weekly food boxes for all Turnkey families as well as the motel shelter families that we anticipate sheltering through the next year at least as well. We have a new program called LIWA to assist with water bills. It is a very small amount of funding, but we've never had this type of funding before through the state and our teams are onboarding that now. The energy and weatherization programs will be bringing in more than two point five million into Yamhill County this year and one point three million will be available in direct client assistance to help with energy bills. And the final slide for me brings us to the youth services we have at YCAP. Youth Outreach is most commonly recognized for the drop-in center in Newburgh, but our programs serve the entire county and are more than just one drop-in location. Youth Outreach encompasses very unique combination of programs. They are funded through very highly competitive federal grants, which address specific issues of runaway and homeless youth. And our programs actually start as young as age eleven. So during COVID, we continue to prioritize the operations of our drop-in center and our shelter efforts knowing that youth struggled with a lot of challenges during COVID at home and with schools being closed. And during that time, we were able to seek some funding and now have some exciting plans to expand here in McMinnville this year. So today I have invited Amber Hanson-Moore, our Youth Outreach Director, to share more about the services in depth and some of our plans for McMinnville. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to her.
Thank you Alexandra. I'm going to pull up my screen if you can bear with me here. Can y'all see that okay?
Yes.
Excellent. So I'm going to take you on a deeper dive into the youth services that are provided under our Department Youth Outreach. And I'm going to actually start with our runaway homeless youth programs. We are the only provider of runaway and homeless youth shelter in Yamhill County. And the Safe Shelter Program is the portion of that that serves the younger teenage range homeless youth. So these are kids who've been kicked out, who've run away from home, who need a place to stay for some reason. It's not intended to be long-term. It's an emergency program, so the maximum length of stay is twenty-one days. Most youth will only stay a couple of days, but we do have some who stay in this shelter for the maximum twenty-one day stay. The purpose of this is to keep the kids off the street. So when we had a fifteen-year-old boy who ran away, the first time he slept outside in the bushes, literally at like a public park, the next time he knew about our services, so he came to us and we were able to put him into our shelter program. One of the really cool things about our Safe Shelter Program is that it uses a host home model. And what that means is we're not a traditional shelter where people come to our building and sleep here on-site. Instead, we use community members who volunteer their time in their home. So I always describe them as people who have a big heart and a spare bedroom because most of them have some kind of prior experience as a youth who lived in a difficult situation and can relate to the kids that we serve. So when we see these kids come to us who need a place to stay, they're actually staying in an actual house in the community with this host home family. The families are not strangers. They may be strangers to the youth, but they're not strangers to us is the way I describe it to the kids. They are thoroughly vetted, certified and trained. In fact, we are licensed by DHS as comparable to a foster home. So it is a very thorough and diligent certification process to make sure that the kids are going into a safe place. And they can stay there, like I said, for up to twenty-one days. The entire time they're in the program and even after they leave the shelter, they work very closely with our case manager, our staff, to identify a safe, stable living situation for them. Our primary goal with that is to get them back home and reunite them with family unless there are some dangers or risks inherent to that, like abuse, for example, in which case we'd work with DHS. Or sometimes we've had a fifteen-year-old girl whose mother would not take her back for no real solid reason. She just refused to let her come home. So we were able to find a sister in another state who was in a very stable environment and was willing to let her come live with her. So the Safe Shelter Program is intended to provide that emergency shelter for these teens who are seventeen and down to age eleven. We have actually had an eleven-year-old stay in our Safe Shelter Program at one point while we work with them to stabilize their situation. It's a crisis response. Part of Safe Shelter, which is not as often addressed, is a prevention component. So even youth who never go into the actual host home or never actually get shelter services from us can still get prevention services where we will work with them and their family to provide individual or family counseling, mediation services, the setting of goals, anything that we can to help them address their needs and stabilize their situation. The other homeless program that we have for youth or young adults in this case is TLP, the Transitional Living Program. And it is for older age youth, eighteen to twenty-one. And more recently, we got a short-term grant to extend that to age twenty-four, so we're really excited about that. And it's a longer-term program. So instead of the twenty-one-day emergency shelter that is Safe Shelter, TLP is a program that allows them to stay for up to eighteen months. They, the focus is different as well. So instead of that emergency crisis response that is Safe Shelter, the focus is on helping them develop the life skills and self-sufficiency that they need to transition into adulthood and be stable adults. And that is everything from financial management, budgeting, jobs development, helping them get jobs and careers hopefully that pay a living wage, to helping them get off the streets and know what it's like to live in an apartment. So the cleanliness expectations, we've had young people in this program get food poisoning because they didn't understand food safety and the need to keep food refrigerated for, you know, you can't leave it out of the fridge for so many hours. And doing laundry. We've also had quite a bit of a learning curve around how to do laundry for the first time and cleaning the lint trap. So the, the goals that we set with them and the life skills that we develop range on a, on a large range from those higher-end goals to those small pieces that some of us take for granted because we have the good fortune of having learned them from our parents or other positive adult role models in our life. While they're in this program, they live together in apartments and we have four per apartment. Two of those apartments are in McMinnville, one of them is here in Newburgh. And we, I'd say it's lightly supervised. There's not a staff person there twenty-four-seven, but we do have a lot of rules that we enforce and staff that periodically just pop in and check on them to make sure they're following those rules. They also meet weekly with the case manager to set goals and work toward self-sufficiency. So that's the TLP program. Those are our two primary, those are our two shelter programs for runaway and homeless youth. We also have the drop-in center, which Alexandra referred to, which is kind of the heart of all of our services and programs. And it's almost similar to what she described as the Navigation Center, but it's youth-focused and it is an opportunity for youth to come and receive services. And that service ranges from recreational activities like arts and crafts, video games, board games, Magic the Gathering tournaments, which is actually one of our most popular activities that we do here, to more in-depth or higher-need services like distribution of food and hygiene supplies and clothes. It is also through our drop-in center that we have an academic support program. So for example, last year when schools were closed and everybody was in distance learning, we were open safely with a lot of protocols in place. Nonetheless, we were open and for many young people, the only place that they could come, find a quiet corner that they could access the internet to log into their classes and attend class. And then we also have staff and interns and work studies in partnership with George Fox locally to have people who can help them with their homework. So in the last school year, we logged nine hundred and fifty-plus hours of academic support because there's such a high need for it. We are still seeing, even now that schools are open, a number of youth come here for help with their homework. And we're partnered with the schools locally to try to identify who those youth are and make referrals and make sure they're getting the support they need. Our jobs program is also a good entryway into our services. That is everything from your fifteen, sixteen-year-old applying for their first job to your eighteen, nineteen-year-old who's graduating high school, applying for college and wants help with financial aid, college applications. We've been doing workshops to help the soft skills, if you will, which is appropriate communication in the workplace, teamwork, those kind of things. which is appropriate communication in the workplace, teamwork, those kinds of things that are important but less tangible. We've also started a series of career workshops where we bring in professionals to talk to the youth about what it's like to work in their field, and that is all youth-driven. So in late December, we had a local police officer come. We called it pizza with a police officer because several kids were interested in law enforcement. So they were able to talk to him and learn what it's like to be a police officer for a day. And, and hear that directly from the source. We've got nursing students who are going to come and speak for those who are maybe interested in healthcare. We tried with everything we do to make sure that it is driven by the youth so that we're giving them services and activities that they really want. And that's also kind of our gateway. By having fun stuff, we can get them through the door. And once they're here, we have very skilled staff who are well-equipped at building rapport with them and building their trust. And that allows those staff to become mentors formally or informally to those youth and identify those higher needs. Like maybe they do need shelter, maybe they are food insecure. Maybe they do need some clothes or a winter coat or gloves or something of that sort. They don't usually come here immediately for those things. They come for the fun, they stay for, for the rest. So it's an important part of our service structure, this Drop-In Center. And we are super excited because we are trying to open one in McMinnville. Not trying, we will. And we've got a space identified as Alexandra mentioned. And we're working out the lease with Yamhill, with the county so that we can get the doors open. Hopefully this summer is our goal, but we have to do some renovation and finalize a lot of pieces. But nonetheless, we're really eager to do that. So we can bring some of these services and supports to McMinnville and surrounding areas and reduce one of the obstacles we see to Yamhill County youth accessing our services, which is transportation to and from our site. I did share a couple pictures. We have a garden here, just small raised beds. And every year the youth help to plant and then we harvest the food. And sometimes we'll do little cooking classes on how to prepare that food into something, something healthy ideally. The one with a skate park or the skateboard there is part of our street outreach efforts. We know that not everyone can come to our drop-in and we know that we have to meet people where they are. So we go to places youth frequent and the skate park is one of the most popular so that we can talk about our services to kids and let them know that we exist so that when they do run away, when they do have a need, they know who to call and where to go. We do a lot of outreach in schools as well for the same purpose, to make sure everyone knows where we're at. And we have leadership opportunities. The young ones at the bottom left with the bow tie, which is super cute, especially because these two usually come here, they're brothers and their hair is disheveled. And so to see they, they dressed up super nice for an election that our Youth Advisory Council was doing because they wanted to run for president of that council, which is our leadership opportunity. The, the Yak, our Youth Advisory Council, gives youth an opportunity to do community service projects, have a more involved voice in the programs and services that we offer and to be a leader to the other kids here. They also do service projects. And then we partner with other organizations. We partnered this past April with Juliette's House. So we've got pictures of the blue pinwheels. We went up and down Main Street here in Newburgh planting pinwheels and ribbons everywhere so that we can bring awareness to those issues in partnership with places like Juliette's House. I also wanted to share a few stats about who it is that we see here. We do predominantly see currently Newburgh Dundee youth through our Drop-In Center. But I will say that for our Safe Shelter Program, those runaway and homeless youth are also coming equally from the McMinnville area. So having a drop-in there will do a lot to help the access and serve that community. But in the past year, we had more than 250 unduplicated youth come through our doors with over 2,500 visits. And part of the reason that is really important is because the statistics around after-school programs and summer programs, which is very similar to what we do in some ways, show that the more youth come to those programs, the more likely they are to take advantage or they're more likely they are to get the advantages of those services and programs. And our data certainly reflects that. But we're also serving youth that are high needs in many ways. Among our drop-in where it says all services, almost one in four identify in the LGBTQIA+ community. And almost half report behavioral or mental health problems, predominantly anxiety, depression, and ADHD. Those are the three that are almost exclusively in that category. And when I break it down to just those that are in our Safe Shelter Program, half of them are LGBTQIA+ and 64% reported those behavioral problems. So these, in many ways are, this is who we are serving, which is why it's important for us to recognize and acknowledge and understand how to serve this, these communities effectively and these youth effectively. The race and ethnicity is not terribly dissimilar to what we see in Yamhill County as a whole. We do tend to see more male than female here for whatever reason that is as far as gender. But this is sort of a snapshot of what we see here. And that is everything. So I will open it up to questions.
Let's go ahead and anyone on the line that would like to ask questions of our YCAP representatives, go ahead. Remy, you've got your hand up.
Thank you. And thank you to both of you for coming in, presenting today. We really appreciate it. And in addition to all of the, the work that you do in the community. I'm going to kind of, my first question is really easy and really for everybody's benefit, I hope. I'm, I'm hoping that you can tell us how families sign up for the Safe Shelter Program. And then I'm also wondering if the TLP program operates off that, the, the same, if it operates in the same way in which you're looking for families with big hearts and a spare bedroom. I'll, I'll start there and then I'll come back later with, with more, not hog the floor.
So for Safe Shelter, we advertise our number everywhere across the county. So 24/7, 365 days a year, someone can call our phone. They can either call, call us here, they can come here, or they can call that after-hours phone. So there's multiple access points. And talk to a staff member. That's the first thing to say, hey, this is what I need. And then we can get the process going of completing an intake. We do require parental consent for our Safe Shelter Program. We're housing minors, but we have 24 hours per our policy to notify the parents. So if there is an immediate need to get them in and we can't get ahold of the parents right away, we can still put them into our shelter program. But the first thing is just talking to a staff member, either calling the front office or calling our office, calling our after-hours phone or showing up here at a drop-in. And then, go ahead.
Do you mind, I'm sorry if I, if you don't mind me interjecting. And I know that you advertise in the News Register and a number of places, but I meant more the process for families that might be interested in providing shelter. Can you address how families that want to be shelter providers would join the Self-Shelter Program? Thanks.
Yes. The first step would be to meet with me so I can review some of the expectations that are part of that. The process includes an application. There's an initial application that includes references. We have to make sure you have like appropriate, it would do background checks. Then there's a family autobiography form is what it's called. It's like an application, but it's much deeper and it does dive into your family dynamics. Because we want to make sure that we're placing youth into a safe and healthy environment. So there's a lot of questions as part of the application process. There's a background check. There's a home visit that I would do where I would interview the family in their home and kind of ask them more questions and get a deeper understanding of the family and its dynamics. And it's really like building a relationship so that I can confirm and verify that the family is safe and then also dot the i's and cross the t's as far as background checks and making sure that the home does actually have a spare bedroom that has a window in it. So if there was a fire, they could escape. There are safety requirements like that around it. And then there's training, lots of training. We have to do 15 hours of training and orientation before a family can shelter a youth.
Thank you. And, and then the second part of the question was if the TLP also uses homes for shelter. Oh, no. Never mind. You ended up answering that and I have my answer. Sorry. I, you answered it very thoroughly. Thank you.
There's actually an interesting component of our TLP that does allow 16 and 17-year-olds into it, but only if they can stay in a host home instead of the apartments, which is our traditional model. But that would require a host home that is willing to longer-term placement. And so far, we don't have host homes that are willing to do those longer-term placements. So it's a bit of a barrier. So if you know people send them my way, there is certainly a need for some of those younger age people.
Other questions?
If not, I'm happy to keep going.
Go ahead, Remy.
Okay, wonderful. Will you talk a little bit more about the LIWA program? As I know you're also aware that we have our Neighbors Helping Neighbors program through McMinnville Water and Light. And I was wondering if you could just address how this supplements that program or if it reaches outside of McMinnville Water and Light customers or if it's applicable for McMinnville Water and Light customers and other customers, et cetera? Thank you.
I may have to refer you to my energy team for some of those details. But what I do know that is unique about this program is it will work with every single vendor across our county, which is a lot, we have to have a contract with every single one for us to process the assistance. And there are no direct client payments with this program. So if we don't have that MOU with a specific vendor in Yamhill County, we would not be able to extend that program to them. So I think we've been successful in getting those MOUs signed and are hopeful to have most of the major vendors working with the LIWA program. But we do know it's a very small amount of funds. I want to say it's under $250,000 and it will go pretty quickly. But I can get you a contact to get some more specific information on the program itself.
Just curious, not needed, but thank you.
Other questions? I'll, I'll, I'll let you know, last night at Mack Water and Light, we went over the Customers Helping Customers. And we're doing a three-for-one. For every dollar we get from our customers, we'll put $3 into that. And we renewed that for a year up to $20,000. And, you know, later date, we'll take a look in the next fiscal year if the city's going to participate in that. So we've got a two-tiered program to help those with utility needs. Other questions? Very thorough job. I, I think the presentation, you know, we print those slides, we'll have a lot of good information. So Alexandra and, and Amber, thank you so very much for the detailed nature of your presentation. I'll tell you from my perspective, I see, I mean, YCAP has always been significant in our community, but I've seen so much growth and so much more outreach. And from a city perspective, just a great partnership that we, we look forward to meeting and working with, with your organization for years to come. So, thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Uh huh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Next on our agenda this evening, we have our public meeting, public records, city council training. And we have this under the, the direction of our city attorney, Amanda Valhinman. And, and she'll introduce the topic to us and she's got slides in our packet. And so Amanda, welcome. And again, this is just in our continuation of understanding our role as city council. So, welcome.
Yes, thank you Mayor Hill and councilors. And before I get to my slide presentation, I am working with staff to make sure that we are doing annual trainings as well for our committees and boards. So that way they're all caught up, especially as we have turnover of the members on, on the public meetings and public records laws. So let me share my screen here real quick. Okay. So today we're going to be discussing public meetings and public records. And this is a really high-level overview. We're not going to go into a whole lot of detail, but just as a refresher course for, for the councilors. So starting with public meetings, they're defined in the Oregon statutes under ORS 192, 610 through 695. And the intent, as stated in the statutes of the public meetings law, is that decisions of governing bodies be arrived at openly. That means that the public has the ability to understand and watch how the governing body reaches the decisions that it makes. So relevant definitions for you all are governing body, which is members of a public body with authority to make decisions for or recommendations to a public body. And then public body, which includes the city, any board, department, commission, council, committee, or other advisory group. And I want to stop there and point out, what these two definitions means is that the city council can, is both a governing body and a public body under the public meetings laws. So it's a, a governing body because it has the authority to make decisions for the city. And it's also a public body because it's a city council. So it falls under both definitions. Similarly, committees or even if a subgroup of the council are formed to make recommendations for the council, those are also governing bodies. So for example, if the council wanted to appoint a subcommittee to discuss a specific issue for the council and bring back recommendations, that, that committee would also be governed by the public meetings law. A meeting is defined as a convening of a governing body for which a quorum is required in order to make a decision or deliberate toward a decision. So that really gets at the heart of what will be a public meeting, what is a meeting that falls under the public meetings laws or is not a public meeting. So we'll get into that a little bit. For us, for the city council, a quorum is for councilors. So I would hope this would go without stating, saying, but meetings of the council must be open to the public and the public must be permitted to attend. Now, there are some exceptions to this rule. First, anything that's not a meeting, going back to that definition that I just read, that does not have to be open to the public and the public does not have to be permitted to attend. So things like trainings, those wouldn't be considered meetings because substantive issues aren't discussed. They're usually, you know, like this, for example, where I'm just explaining how public meetings law works. As a training, that is not, not something that would constitute a meeting for the city council. Executive sessions similarly have special rules. They are considered meetings under the public meetings law, but they're closed to certain persons. Generally, they're closed to the public, but the media is allowed to attend. And obviously, a relevant staff are, are also allowed to attend. Despite that, and as the council knows, is that if the council is going to make a decision on something, that has to be made during a public meeting. So even if something is discussed in executive session, no action can be taken unless it comes to a public meeting for discussion and a vote. The requirements for a public meeting are, the public meeting has to be noticed. The public meeting, to the extent it's being held in person, has to be located within the jurisdiction of the city. There has to be an accessible location. And then there has to be either minutes or a recording of that public meeting, basically as a way to, to understand what occurred at that public meeting. So the big question that gets asked quite a bit is what are we allowed to do outside of a public meeting? Councilor Drapkin, if you had a question about that last slide, I'm happy to take a question.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Do we do both the recording and the minutes for accessibility standards or? Question mark.
What do you, what do you mean by accessibility standards?
Well, I'm just wondering, we, we, we have this redundancy. Our specific system has a redundancy. We record the meetings now and we do the minutes. So I'm just wondering if that's just developed over time. I'm just, I'm just realizing as you presented this that we have a redundancy and so I'm...
I'm just realizing, as you presented this, that we have a redundancy, and so I'm just curious as to why, not because I'm for it or against it or anything like that. I'm just curious.
Yep, you're exactly right. It is a redundancy. So if you do one, you're not required to do the other. We do both. So we both record a meeting and we provide minutes that the council later adopts. And I think that redundancy is for two reasons. One is that minutes are usually more easily accessible, they're easier to understand what occurred at a council meeting, you know, it's more bite-sized information than having to watch, you know, a two-hour-long council meeting to find where a discussion occurred. At the same time, you know, there have been, there's definitely times where you want to go back and see what was exactly said, and who, you know, the entire discussion around an issue, that's not going to be derived from minutes. So it is a redundancy, we're not required to do it. I would say it's a standard practice that we've been doing for quite a long time at this point. So even though we're not required to do it under statute, I think there's value in doing both, both, the minutes and the recordings. Any other questions about minutes and recordings, or the other legal requirements of the public meetings? Okay, I got a thumbs up, so we'll move on. Okay, so again, the communications allowed outside of a meeting, this really gets to the heart of what I think, where the most questions about public meetings occurs, and that's what can you do and not do. So when there's a quorum, that's a majority of the councilors, the councilors cannot have a communication to decide or deliberate towards any decision on any matter that is before or may come before the council. And that's where it gets really tricky, because there may be discussions that occur about, and the contemplation may be, this is never going to come before us, and then it does, and that then raises an issue. So the advice that I give, and that I think, you know, anyone advising a public body would give, is if you don't need to talk about it, don't talk about it. It's, you know, it's better to just avoid the discussion. And basically, you know, there's all, there's, can be a perception of impropriety, even if there's not a violation of the public meetings law, if discussions are happening outside of a public meeting on an issue that could come before the council. So again, when there's a quorum, you definitely cannot talk about something that may come before the council. Now, where it can get complicated is on serial communications, and whether that can create a quorum. And where this really comes in is from some case law that occurred back in 2015 and 2016. So I want to take a minute to talk about this case law, because it can be a little bit confusing. So essentially, what happened was Lane County, a commissioner for, on Lane County's Board of Commissioners, it's a five-member commission, one member was running for reelection and sent a communication to an outside party about funding the campaign, or funding a personal debt that the commissioner owed to the county. And the person who received the communication was concerned that that communication might violate the ethics rules. So that person handed it over to their attorney, their attorney sent a communication to the county council, who was also the district attorney at the time, about this issue. Well, news media then requested, made a public records request for that attorney's letter to the county council. And so then a question was created about whether, so the county council slash district attorney decided, I'm not going to turn over the letter under, you know, some requirement or some exemptions under the public records law, but you, as a commission, can always decide to produce something on your own accord. So even if something can be exempt, a public body can always decide to produce it regardless. So basically, the commission, some of the commissioners and the county administrators started having communications about two things. One was whether or not to hold an emergency hearing, an emergency meeting to decide to produce the document. And two, conversations about the document. So, short, long story long, the county held an emergency meeting, voted to produce the document, and the document was produced. That commissioner, who, you know, was engaged in this ethics issue, then sued the county saying that they violated the public meetings law by having these communications outside of a public meeting. So what the Court of Appeals said, when this case went up to the Court of Appeals, is that, it said, if you're talking about trying to get together to schedule an emergency meeting, that's an administrative issue, that is not subject to the, that's not a violation of the public meetings law. So a quorum of the commissioners talking about whether they could meet for an emergency meeting, that did not rise to, that was not a violation. But then what the Court of Appeals said is, if there were serial communications about whether to produce that document to comply with the public records request, that was something, that was deliberating towards a decision, and that needed to occur in a public meeting. So the Court of Appeals said, it doesn't, said, it doesn't matter so much as to the time and place, like, does everyone have to be in the same room having a discussion? What they said is, and I want to get this right, because I think it's important, is they said, they need to show, sorry, I'm getting back to the page that I highlighted. They need to show that a series of discussions can rise to the level of prohibited deliberation or decision based on if there's a sufficient number of officials involved, what they discuss, and the purpose for which they discuss it, not the time, place, or manner of their communications. So it was on that basis that the Court of Appeals said emails over a day could constitute, could create a quorum based on if there's a, if there's a sufficient number of officials to meet the quorum, they discuss something that would require a vote, and the purpose for why they're discussing it. So with that, the case then gets appealed to the Supreme Court, and this is what the Supreme Court said, which is why we, you know, anyone advising governing bodies always say, don't engage in serial email communications. What the Supreme Court said, when they evaluated the Court of Appeals' decision, is that they assumed, without deciding that the Court of Appeals correctly held, that a quorum of the public body can meet by means of serial communications. In this case, the decision whether to publicly release the attorney's letter, there was not, there was not a form of communications with the members for the purpose of deciding or deliberating towards that decision. So the Supreme Court never, never actually took up the issue of whether or not serial emails constituted a quorum that violated the public meetings law. So what attorneys that advise governing bodies all say is, assume that the Court of Appeals' case is still good law, because the Supreme Court didn't overrule that. The Supreme Court essentially assumed that that was true without deciding one way or another, which is why we say, don't reply all, in all likelihood, if there's a challenge, someone's going to rely on that Court of Appeals' case to say, that constitutes a quorum, that action of serial communications constitutes a quorum. So that was a long discussion about serial communications. Does anyone have questions about serial communications? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised, so I will move on. When there's not, oh, Councilor Chenoweth.
I'm sorry, I raised my hand button five times before it finally showed up. So I do have a question about this, because I got some tremendous feedback, pushback on this. I shared a little bit with you, I didn't share the entire meat of what I got that went on for a page and a half, about whether reply all would actually lead into a serial communications, and whether or not we should be avoiding that. And I guess one of the questions I have, and the case in point would be to use the most recent event where that was happening, the constituent is still getting all these emails, and is still just as capable of sending it right back to us, so we know what every single person was saying, and did do that, in fact. So regardless of whether we hit reply all or not, we still were provided with the exact same information. I guess I'm not understanding how replying all to an email is the same as the, when you look at the litigation that took place, that was an actual leading to a decision working behind the scenes. They were literally doing that behind the scenes. When you're replying all, you're just trying to answer a constituent and giving them answers to what they're looking for, and making it clear to the rest of the body that you've responded, but you're not really trying to reach a decision, you can't do that till you're in a public meeting. So I, and you're doing it with the public, therefore, you're already being public in what you're doing. So I guess I'm not understanding the danger altogether with the reply all.
Right. So there's basically two different things at issue. The first question is, a reply all could not violate the public meetings law as long as you're not deciding or deliberating towards a decision. So if it's something that will never come before the council, you'd be fine. The question is, you don't know if it'll ever come before the council for a vote. And if it does come before a council, the council, you relaying what your position is on that issue to the other councilors is where you're going to run into the issue. The second issue, and it's a good point, it's something that is good to clarify, is your example of if that, if your email goes to the constituent and the constituent forwards it back to the rest of the councilors, right? That constituent is not a member of the governing body, and so it's not treated the same under the public meetings law as if a member of the governing body sends the communication. So that's where the distinction, the rub is, and it is technical. And I will say, having read these cases and cases like it, it is very fact-specific. So it'll look at who sends the email to whom, so that's what the Supreme Court ultimately said. The Supreme Court, the reason that it found that a public meetings violation didn't happen is because it went through every single communication that was sent, and at no particular time was the discussion of the request of the public records request ever communicated to more than two of the five council commissioners. And that's why it ruled that there was no violation. So it gets very fact-specific about what was said, to whom, what's the decision that's being made or not made, right? So it can get very technical, which is why we advise, and it also can give a perception, regardless of the public meetings law, that something is happening outside of public meetings that should be in front of a community, right? So while in an individual situation, it may not actually violate the public meetings law, it's the risk you run, right? So it's a risk analysis at that point of whether or not to engage in that communication.
I guess we're, it's definitely a risk analysis, because as public-facing people, our job is to respond to our constituents. To not respond to our constituents is putting us in a box, it's kind of difficult. And when those constituents are wanting that communication, they chose to send it to all of us for a reason. They're wanting that communication to be across everybody they've put on that list for a reason, and we circumvent that. I feel like that puts us in a position that, I can't imagine, and maybe I'm crazy, but I can't imagine any judge looking at that and saying, you were trying to negotiate to a decision through this communication because you replied all to a constituent's concern. It just logically seems like a fallacy that we're ever going to face that in a court case. So anyway, I would, I don't want to hang this up, because I have a tendency to do that, and I don't want to hang this up. But I would love to have this conversation even more later.
And what I would always advise is, when in doubt, please pick up the phone and call me. Happy to talk through it, because, Councilor Chenoweth, like we've talked about, if it's something, I mean, I would never advise reply all, but if it's something that we can do a risk analysis and say, the risk is very low or nonexistent, then I'm going to tell you that, right?
And let me clarify, for the record, I don't think I've ever hit reply all, but I just, just for the record, I'm not saying that I'm a big advocate of doing that. There's another reason that I find that to become a spaghetti mess. But anyways, I do, I do get, I mean, I got, I got to tell you, I got some real pushback on that, and I'll send it over to you at some point in time, I haven't had a chance to do so, because it was pretty heated. But anyways.
And I will, and I will say too, as well, if this kind of communication is going on, then I think it's worthy of a discussion to say, if there's this much communication and councilors are worried about it, the alternative is to discuss it in a public meeting, which is something that we could, you know, talk about doing and putting on the agenda. So if there's, if there's a desire to have the discussion and there's concern about violating the public meetings law, the answer is, do it, let's have a conversation in the public meeting as well. Was there another question, another hand raised that I saw?
Kelly, I thought, I saw your hand up for a moment.
I found Chris's question interesting. It's just, we've had a number of complaints recently, and I was thinking about the progression of how this worked. And most of my, when I replied, I replied directly to the person that was writing the question to me, and then also to a staff member, but sometimes other people pop up into it. It's not unusual for me to have seen something that Zach responded to, and the vice versa. So, you know, I just kind of, am I doing something wrong here? I don't really want to do it, and I'm sure Zach doesn't, but I do appreciate knowing how he's responded.
Yeah, so if there's only two, if there's only two councilors on the email, that's not going to violate the public meetings law. The question is, is what you have to be mindful of is, when you are replying, is looking at the list of people who are on that to see, you know, are we getting to the point where there's multiple people, and what are we discussing? Are there multiple councilors on it, and are we discussing something that could come before the council for a vote?
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So the much easier situation, oh, go ahead, Councilor Drapkin.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna boil down what I heard you saying, because to me, it's kind of straightforward. You're, and maybe I'm hearing you incorrectly. You're not telling us, and I, I mean, I'll just say, I don't feel like you're saying you can't reply all. I hear you saying, I advise you to not reply all because you don't know the context, there could be something out of context, or something that could come into a meeting, and so the city's response, if there is a reply all then, is to go ahead and include those communications in our packets anyway, to make sure that our bases are covered. So you're kind of encouraging us not to, because there's less filtering that has to happen on the back end about whether or not that communication was prudent, but there's no, but to me, it's very clear, there's no rule, so to speak, that has to be followed of don't reply all. It's just you continuously strongly encourage us not to do it because of the need to filter then the content of the email, and potentially then include those correspondence in public meeting packets.
Yes, exactly right. It's, I would say, you know, there's not a statute, right? The statute does not say, reply all emails constitute, you know, with counselor, with a quorum of a governing body on it violates the public meetings law. There's not a statute that says that. It's the interpretation of the statutes under the Oregon case law that leads to this, that then gets into what I was saying about the risk analysis. So I'm always going to advise you, never reply all. Feel free to directly contact the constituent, because I agree with Councilor Chenoweth about being responsive, right? So, you know, directly contact, talk with the constituent about the issue, but don't engage in a reply all. If a reply all does happen, and it's something that could be an issue that comes before the council, then it will get added to the packet to make sure that we're providing transparency to the public about the discussions that are going on amongst councilors. Councilor Chenoweth?
I just wanted to say thank you, Remy, for asking that question, because no, that wasn't obvious to me. I thought this was a hard and fast rule, and I appreciate the clarity.
So the easier one is when there's not a quorum. When there's not a quorum, you generally can discuss a matter that's coming before the council. The exception is really when there's a quasi-judicial matter, which we will get into the rules of council when it's legislative or quasi-judicial in a moment. But basically, when you, when there's a quasi-judicial matter coming before the council, there should be no outside discussions about the issue. Otherwise, those discussions have to be disclosed in the public meeting. So again, you know, a lot of the public meetings law and public records law, for that matter too, are about best practices versus what the statutes say. So again, and this gets to what Councilor Drapkin was saying, the best practice is to never reply all. It's a clean... Um, it's the cleanest, easiest way to make sure you're not going to violate the public meetings law. And that's what I will always advise you all to do. That doesn't mean that all email communicate, if an email communication is, does, where somebody does a reply all will viol, it automatically violates the public meetings law, just means that there's going to be a risk analysis or an analysis under the public meetings law about whether it was violated or not. And that really looks at who was on the email and what was discussed. So again, um, and as I've already mentioned, uh, when in doubt, please pick up the phone, send me an email, I'm happy to talk through the issue and, and advise you, um, about what would be best practices and also what will or will not be allowed under the law. And also when in doubt, avoid talking to other counselors until you can at least touch base with staff. Okay, so let's get to the types of decisions. There's three different, different types of decision, legislative, quasi-judicial, and administrative. Most of the counselor, most of the city council's decisions are legislative, that's where you're sitting in the role of the policymaker, and it's citywide applicable policies. So, um, you're not deciding on a specific, you know, property and what that property, how that property is going to be developed, you're making, um, wider-reaching policies regarding, um, how the city's going to develop or how the city is going to operate. Quasi-judicial, um, decisions are when you're sitting in the role of the judge, that's where you're taking the facts that are before you in the record and you're applying them to our code or the statute, state statutes, or, or specific policies that we have adopted. Basically, that's where you can't go outside of the specific facts and the specific rules in the particular case. There are specific rules about, specific statutes about ex parte contact outside of a meeting when you're, when there's a quasi-judicial land use decision or a quasi-judicial decision. And basically what it is, is if you've talked with somebody or somebody has talked with you about that particular development, um, you have to disclose that in a public meeting, you have to disclose what the contact was, and, um, the person who engaged in the contact also has the ability to rebut what, what you discussed. It doesn't necessarily mean you can't make a decision, but it does, it's something that you have to disclose in the public meeting. The final rule is administrative, and generally those, these aren't the type of decisions that actually come before the council. They're usually tied to the inner workings of the city or of the council. So generally, if it's internal workings of the city, that's something left to the city manager, if it's internal workings of the counselor, it's up to the mayor generally as the chair of, as, sitting as the chair of the council. An example, though, of an administrative decision that would come before the council, that does come before the council, is the nomination of the council president. That's an example of a, an administrative decision that would, would come to the council. So going on to pub, well, is there anything else, any, any questions anybody has about public meetings? Again, it's a weighty topic, so if, when in doubt, please reach out, ooh, I like that slogan. Okay, so on public records, this is under ORS 192001 and through 192607. And the purpose statement for public records are, is twofold, is we want an informed public, they want to know what the government is doing, and it's also for historic knowledge, how did the government get here and why? So that's why we preserve certain records for a certain amount of time, um, so we can inform the public and we also can know how we got to where we are. So there's some things that are public records and some things that aren't. A public record is prepared, owned, used, or retained by the city, it relates to an activity, transaction, or function of the city, and is necessary for fiscal, legal, administrative, or historic policies, requirements, or needs of the city. So the alternative is what we often refer to as like transitory communications, um, or transitory in, uh, information, something that, uh, for example, if you say, um, hey, I'm going to stop by your office, okay, I'll see you in 10 minutes. Those aren't public records that need retention. But anything that actually talks about what the city is doing, um, and it's a city email, which all counselors' emails are city emails, uh, those have to be preserved per a, um, public records schedule. So, um, some other things that, uh, are not public records are extra copies, so if multiple people, um, or if you're receiving multiple copies of the same document, we only need to retain one copy of that document, the city only needs to retain one copy. Voicemails are not public records, but if you have a system where your voicemail comes through via email and you're forwarding that email, um, those are, those then become public records and have to be preserved. Obviously, communications like over the telephone, those aren't public records as long as you're not recording them, but a recording could, could be a, a public record if it's relating to city business. Um, and again, anything that's not relating to the conduct of city business is not going to be a public record. All counselors are subject to the public records law, um, so that means your emails as, in your role as counselor are subject to the public records law and must be retained. There are retention schedules, um, they're pretty lengthy, and it all depends on what the communication is, not what your role is. So even though I'm the attorney for the city, my, different documents based on what they are will have different retentions. It's not like all legal documents constitute, have one retention. So it's very, it's based on, on the particular document and what's contained in the document. So if you have questions about how long you need to retain do, a certain document, the best people to reach out to are Claudia or myself, and we can look up the schedule for you on, on that matter. Um, there's some great, really helpful resources that I rely on, Claudia relies on, and, um, are, are very helpful for, for, you know, figuring out some nuances, um, about the public meetings law and public records law. The best, one of the best ones is the Oregon Attorney General's Office puts out a Public Meetings and Public Records Manual, the most recent one is from 2019. It's got a lot of great information and goes through basically every one of the statutes and explains them, tells you about case law that analyze them, it's really helpful and easily searchable in, in my view. Also, the League of Oregon Cities has, um, educational videos and online books, um, that can provide some information, they're good training, they're pretty quick, um, you know, refresher courses, which is really helpful. And obviously, for, for other resources, Claudia and I are probably the two best people to contact if you have a question about public meetings or public records. So whenever you have a question, do not hesitate to reach out and ask, we will help, um, find the answers for you, um, as soon as possible. With that, that's all I've got for you. Again, weighty topic, and I, and, and I think, you know, what would be helpful is as, to the extent that there's any, um, any new cases that come up or any new nuances with regard to public meetings or public records, we'll just continue to provide information and education to the council. So I'm happy to answer any other questions, but that's all I have for you today.
Any other questions? It doesn't look like we have additional, uh, questions, Sal's got a thumb up and, and Zach has his heart up. Again, Amanda, thank you, and this set of, uh, documents or the, the slides are going to be helpful, and I would suggest that maybe, uh, print those off and have them, and it can remind us of, uh, from a summary standpoint, uh, what, what, what the law is. Okay.
Actually, I did think of one question, sorry.
Go ahead, Zach.
Uh, couldn't do it, I couldn't.
Couldn't make it through a meeting without a question from Counselor Jerry.
Couldn't do it, tried really hard, um. I have a bet about 8:00 PM, so I gotta really draw this one out. How does the mayor factor into quorum numbers? You know, I, 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 I know voting members, but as far as on both, or some of the examples you gave on, um, email exchanges or things like that, is, is it, is, is it th, three or more voting members or the, the mayor, does he factor into that, or can you, can you just give me a refresher on that?
So the quorum is four or more counselors.
Okay, okay.
So, yeah. So that's where, the question is, what is quorum? So on committees, the quorum is going to be different because the quorum, um, because committees don't, like, all committee members, including the chair and vice chair, are consider, are voting members, so theirs is a straight majority, that's not the same with the council, I mean, because it's based on the counselors being the quorum.
Got it, okay, cool, thank you.
And Sal, did you have your hand up?
Uh, no, Mayor, that was just a mistake, thank you.
Any other questions for Amanda? Well, again, thank you for, uh, your attendance this evening, I think both discussions have been enlightening and helpful, and, uh, let's see. I think that, that does it for this evening, uh, thank you all, and we'll talk to you later.